My name is Shawn O'Mahony. I want to thank everyone for coming out, and I'd like to particularly thank Unity Square and New Brunswick Patch for putting this whole thing together. I think it's super important that we have an opportunity to discuss the important ideas that affect our city and then we get to hear from the people that we elect. So I think that this is fantastic that they've created a space to hear from the candidates. So I just want to say thank you for that. It's clear that the pathway to a good job in America centers around education. I know that the kids in New Brunswick are just as smart and as capable as kids, every other community around the state. But unfortunately, the school system here is not providing the quality of education that they deserve. And that's why I've chosen to run for the New Brunswick School Board. Community service has been an important part of my life. When I was 17, I volunteered as an EMT in my hometown. I did that for five years. Then I came to Rutgers and I studied sociology. I've worked as a manager at a group home for adults with autism. I've served as a part-time lecturer at Rutgers University. And I've been a community organizer here in New Brunswick, working on issues of public safety and government transparency. I'm also a New Brunswick homeowner, and I own a small business doing web development and print design. I think that we can work together to make New Brunswick a better place. I know that there are people who have different ideas, and I think that's okay. I think that real leadership means working with people who you don't agree with all the time on the areas that you do agree. And I'm somebody who's ready to work with the other six members of the board. To put New Brunswick's kids first, we're running a Raspers campaign. We're independent candidates. The only constituency that we have to serve are the New Brunswick students. They have to be the priority. And there's a lot of other institutions that we need to bring in to make sure that they succeed. So one of the things that I wanted to talk about was dealing with the issue of violence in the community. There's been far too much of it in the past few years, and I know that it's become an obstacle for New Brunswick high school students to be able to focus on their studies. So that's one area that I'd like to work with the social workers and the teachers to develop anti-violence strategies to try to stem the tide of violence in our community. And the other area that I think is vitally important that we focus on is preparing these kids for the jobs of the 21st century. So many things are changing because of technology. So many jobs are changing. So it's very, very important that we focus on science and math education and getting every kid ready for college because that's what's going to be necessary for them to get good jobs in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Raja?
Thank you. Good evening. I also would like to thank Unity Square for putting this forum together. My name is Pat Sadowski, and I'm a local resident in New Brunswick and a graduate of New Brunswick High School. I'm a registered nurse for the past 42 years at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, and I have served on this board for the last 16 years. My children went to Woodrow Wilson. Most of my family are graduates of New Brunswick High School. I work with my sister-in-law, who is also a registered nurse, and she is a nurse practitioner and a proud graduate of New Brunswick High School also. So it's a family thing in our family, a being a zebra. My goal, if you choose to reelect me to be on the board, is to finish one of the biggest projects, and that is Redchild School. They're starting with the footings. Take a peek up there and see what they're doing. And I check it at least once a week. The other project that I would like to see completed would be the dedicated cafeteria for the fall Robinsons' school. I agree with my opponent. We need to do things better. The curriculum will be changing soon due to the core content standards. Everything right now is being upgraded, and we're having revisions to the curriculum. One of the most important curriculum revisions for me is the health curriculum and phys ed. We have an obesity problem here in New Brunswick. At the hospital, we call that well-married, so nobody gets hurt by the obesity label. Gym class, things have to change. We have to make them more modern, and that's one of the things we're looking at. We are rampant with diabetes in the city of New Brunswick. So it's going to be concentrating on nutrition, concentrating on getting our kids up and moving, and making our students healthier. If you're healthy, you're going to be smarter. And that's one of the reasons why I would like to be reelected to the Board of Ed. I don't feel that I'm finished. The thing that I bring to the table, I think, is that I'm a mom, and it's the experiences my children went through as students, and I bring that with me all the time. I know it's difficult to be a working parent and having to go home and do homework and encouraging their kids to study when there's so many other things that they would rather do, such as video games, the computer, now iPhones. I just had to deal with the video games and the computer. So I think it's really important that we address our kids, we be with our kids, we support our kids, and I encourage every parent to get involved in their school's PTA, like I did. And that's where I started and went to the board, and I encourage everyone to be involved in their student's education. Get to know your principal, get to know your teachers, get involved in the school. And this is the way that your child will be a successful student. Thank you.
Well, welcome, everybody. And thank you for taking time to be here with us. My name is Martin A. Ocho. I've been a resident in New Brunswick for over 30 years. During this time, I volunteer in many ways throughout the city. I was a PTO president of most of those schools that some of my children attended. I was a Little League coach for baseball and soccer. I was a member, and I'm still are, an officer with the National Columbus. I was a school board member for a few years also. And during this time at the school board, I was able to help bring some things back with the assistance of the guidance department in the high school. We were able to get the kids more prepared for college and look for scholarships and funding for them. Also, I had a lot of interaction with the staff and the parents when I was there. I also was able to increase the outreach to parents and students into positive interactions with everyone. I helped arrange the music program at that time. And I also brought the intramural sports to the elementary schools. Professionally, I have worked in community barriers. I worked for the Puerto Rican Action Board, run a dropout officer program that I run. And I also work as the after-school programs coordinator, which I have like 50 students, I mean, 50 college students from Rutgers to help us with homework assistance and also to be mentors for the kids in our schools. I have five kids. They all attended and still attend in the New Brunswick schools. My daughter graduated in 2000 from the high school. My son, older son, graduated in 2002 from the technology school. I have a 17-year-old that will graduate this year also from the technology school. And I have two little ones, one in second grade and a kindergarten. And I say this because I believe in public education. I believe that our schools, you know, the public schools do a lot for our kids, but the other part is that our schools need a lot of help. Our children are failing. The admissions rate is very low, and we need to work on that. It's nice to have real leads and all this, but at the inside, they're not learning. It's not going to do us anything. And we go door-to-door talking to people in our campaign, and we hear all the comments and all the ideas that they give and all the problems that are in schools, from staff and residents, parents. And we want to work with them. We want to bring the parents. I believe, and I know, that the parents are a key to success of the children in the school. And we not only want to welcome them, we want to make them part, an integral part of our schools. We need their input. We need their input. We want to work closely with the staff and give them all the necessary tools and resources that they need to help our kids succeed. So we are here because we want to change the educational system in New Brunswick for the better. We, our kids, we serve the best. Not just a good education, but the best education. And that's what we're here as a group of the Yes We Can, Can Think, We're Gonna Have, and We Better. We're here because we want to make these changes. We want to work with the parents, and we want to work with the staff. And it's, you know, to teach a child is to educate a community, and that's what we want. Thank you.
Ms. Ortiz?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Benito Ortiz. I want to thank Unity Square for having us here in this forum today. And I'm basically, I'm going to tell you a big moment about myself. I'm a lifelong resident of New Brunswick. Lived here 58 years. Went through school here from kindergarten and graduated in 1971. I joined the military in 1971, got out in 1975. When I got out of the military, I came back to New Brunswick as an activist, trying to increase. I never say that our school's bad, okay? Back in the '70s, we had problems. So what I say is, let's improve on what we got. And we tried to do the best we could back in the 1970s, and I felt that we could do more. And I got together with some other city guys that I know, and we started fighting for programs that predominantly would benefit and help the bilingual population, which was growing in the city of New Brunswick. I have two children. Both went to New Brunswick school system. My daughter graduated, went on to Rutgers, and is a professional. She works for DIFUS. My son graduated, went to Millsix County, graduated from there, and is now a foreigner. I've been on the board 16 years. The first time I was on board through two administrations. The first time I came on board, the first couple of years was a learning experience for me, but it was good because I learned that as a group, we can make things happen. As individuals, it's tough, but as a group, we can make things happen. And we started to do so. I had to leave the board after seven years. Then I came back to the community. I had to move down West Carolina, and I came back four years later and got the opportunity to be on the board again, and I talked on it because I've always been an activist in my city, and I love New Brunswick. And I, you know, our school is growing with the city. The renaissance that's been going on in the city of New Brunswick through the administration of Dukano has been phenomenal. And for the last nine years in the public school systems, we've done tremendous work. We built a $180 million school, the second to none in the state of New Jersey with technology. A $180 million school is renowned throughout the state. We kept our tax levies in the city at $27.3 million for the last nine years. Hasn't changed. Stayed the same. That's good for your taxpayers, you homeowners out there. We've passed budgets that kept our levies down, and we're going to continue to do so if we stay on the board. The 2012-13 budget includes 38 new positions of staff in our district. $1.2 million increased for repairs of our buildings, and an additional $8.3 million in capital projects for renovations of our buildings.
One minute, Ms. Ortiz.
In the last nine years, we've had six grants that we applied for to enhance the education of the city of New Brunswick. VH1 Safe and Music, 21 Century Grant, $500,000 for the next five years. Small Learning Community Grant, $250,000 for the next five years. Wellness Center Grant, from Johnson &amp; Johnson, Reading First Grants, $500,000 for the next three years. Solar Energy Consortium, saving $400,000 in energy in the city of New Brunswick. Folks, we've been doing a lot in the city of New Brunswick as board members, and we ask you to keep us growing with the city. Keep the three incumbents in this Board of Education so we can continue.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Raja?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and thank you again, Unity Square, for having us. I know a lot of concerns are regarding my age and my current status as a Rutgers student, and that is why I want to talk a little bit about myself. I'm currently studying education, and I will be attending the Graduate School of Education next year to pursue my teaching career. And I think that is something that conveys my passion towards students and youth, and I will always put them first. And another thing is I have been mentoring at the New Brunswick High School for over a year, and that is one of the main reasons I am pursuing this position on the school board. And just being one of them in the audience today just really empowers me to want to pursue this. Other than that, I have a strong passion for students in urban districts. I think we can't look at urban districts in comparison to any other districts. They are very unique. And that is why I believe I provide a very unique perspective by working with the students every week for two hours and really understanding what their needs are. I see the impact of gang violence. I see the impact that poverty has on our students, and I want to fight for them. I want to fight for the parents as well as fight with you. I think that's very crucial. As well as other qualifications is that I discuss education policy endlessly. Jaya Bravich, the former U.S. Assistant Secretary of Education, has publicly recognized me as well as endorsed my candidacy on the board. And I hope that provides some type of background and understanding of why I'm or why we provide an important perspective on this board. As well as I really want to involve community, or increase community involvement. I believe public schools are the heart of our communities and the community, the entire community. Parents, people who live in the community, students, all should have a say in what happens in our schools. They know what's best for them. I'm not here to tell you what you need to do. I want to hear from you. I want to hear what you have to say and what you believe is best for your children. And that's basically all what I want to provide for you. I want to fight as an ally with you and fight what's best for education to really improve what we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is John Crowes. I've been a board member since 2002, replacing Professor Angus Gillespie, who's a well-renowned professor who wrote many books about the American Studies Program. And I'm pleased to be able to tell you that my area is mostly academics. I am a student advisor at Rutgers, an educator. I teach a number of courses, and mostly the last few years, most of my students have come directly from high school. So I see them as they appear. I see them as they need help and what their problems are. And believe me, I've seen Rutgers students come through too, and I've seen students from so-called much better high schools academically. And some of the students from the much better high schools have more problems than our Rutgers students do. So I agree with Shawn that we have serious problems, but I disagree with his statement that there's no quality. The quality is there. It's opening the doors for all students to obtain that quality is really the problem that we're facing. And it occurs on many levels. I'll address one issue on mobility. It just occurred to me now when I think about our adult school, which by the way is no longer funded by the state. The adult high school was totally funded by our funds from within the Board of Education. New Jersey's state gave it up. We have one board member, another one, Francesca Rodriguez. She in effect is a dropout of the Brunswick High School. She is counted as a dropout. Yet she went through the adult high school, got her degree, got a law degree at Rutgers. So there are a number of students who age out for many reasons. They have social problems at home. They disappear for a while, but they do come back. And that is the way we get them back at the end through the adult high school. So I'd like to point that out as well. Now, I could go through a list of many programs. Abbott is another program that helps students who are not their college-ready, but they don't know it. They have to be encouraged. They have to be developed. They have to be given a very rigorous program. They have one teacher who follows them through for four years in high school. They use something called Cornell Notes, which if I had known about when I was in high school, maybe I would have done a little bit better. The Cornell Notes, we're thinking about it throughout the district line. Rutgers Feature Scholar wrote a letter to the Tarn today. We just learned that 30 of the students who applied in that program, this is the first class allowed to do so, 22 have been admitted to Rutgers directly. Three are waiting lists. And what's, I think, the most important thing of all, four undocumented students, of which we have a fair number in our high school, have received full scholarships at the school. And as far as being open, we are open. I read your statements, and I saw one from Stephanie about the Rutgers Center for Latino Arts and Culture. So I went to Rutgers programs, and sure enough, I didn't find any programs there that we have in the community or in the high school or in our school system at all. So I'm definitely going to pursue that if I'm reelected to the board. We are open to change, and that's something I'll talk about later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. There's actually two related questions, and the second question is asking for more specifics on the first one. Question is, would you be willing to volunteer for activities outside of board meetings to get parents involved? And specifically, how can we get parents more involved in student success in addition to meeting? So what are your thoughts on that and what are your specific ideas in getting parents more involved in student success in education?
Yes, I absolutely would be happy to volunteer outside of board meetings. I recently attended a school board meeting and was very impressed to hear the jazz band that's been recently established. I think that cultural activities like that are a great way to get parents as well as other community members involved in the school. Lots of our students have family that comes from other countries, and I think that cultural events that involve those communities would be great to get more community members involved in the school. One thing I think that we need to do is to reach out to the parents and try to find every way possible to make it easier for them to connect with the teachers. And we need to support the PTAs and encourage greater participation in them and get more parents and teachers working together. Thank you.
How do you get parents more involved? Are you willing to work with parents to get the students more involved? Parents get more involved with students, okay?
Yes, first of all, I am. And I would volunteer to get parents more interested, and I have. I have been the last year especially, last spring actually, at Livingston School, where they have an annual dinner dance at the end of the year. I helped with the line with the staff with the spaghetti dinner. The parents, they had the jazz band perform. They also had a DJ. The parents were out there dancing. I was there with my daughter. And we were out there dancing. I was there for a family fun night. She taught a zumba class. I got up and started doing zumba to get more parents involved, and they did come on board. We have family fun nights in all our schools, and we also have programs for the kids around holidays and around the Hispanic culture month and also African-American history.
Question is about volunteering? The question is about getting parents more involved in education. Oh, okay. Not about volunteering at Rutgers?
Yes, what would your role be in that?
I'm sorry, repeat the question. Would your role be in getting parents more involved in education?
Okay, in the past, like I said, I've been involved with the PTOs and running a PTO and also San Jose Columbus in recreation, running the little ones. And I always had a great influence in bringing parents in. If we have to go door-to-door, like I said, like we've been doing lately, going door-to-door to get parents to come in and be part of our school system, we will have to do it. It will have to take whatever we have to do to get parents involved. And that's my... And if I need to volunteer outside of board, I'm always going to volunteer. So I'm open to anything that has a deal of volunteer to help our kids and our communities.
Yeah, actually, I have no problem meeting dirty in my community. I've done it many times already. I went to the Roosevelt School and cleaned up the backyard of the school with the Parks Department and the students. I have no problems doing that. Again, with parents, I was the president of the bilingual council, Bilingual Parents Council for three years. I've done a lot with parents. I was the BTA president for five years at the high school. I did a lot with parents already and continue to do so. All they have to do is ask and we reach out to them. Anyone on this board right now that's currently on the Board of Education will reach out to parents if they come and they have needs. I had a parent approach me at a board meeting. I told Dr. Rattler down there, told him what the problem was. He resolved it the next day. Parents, all they need to do is seek us out. Tell us where you're located.
Like the rest of them have said, yes, absolutely. And I think it's very important that we acknowledge that not everyone is going to be available for the once-a-week or once-a-month board meetings. We need to make more available times so that all parents or all community members are able to voice their opinions. Like I mentioned, all community concerns are critical when we make decisions regarding our schools and our children. As a Rutgers student, I don't know how I would be able to do this, but we'd definitely like to look more into this in a way that we can hold town hall meetings on the Rutgers campus for parents to come and really express any concerns they may have. Regarding volunteerism, like I mentioned, I'm excited through the Rutgers Feature Scholars Program that Dr. Canos mentioned. And I'm going to be staying with us as long as I am at Rutgers. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I'm a little too old for zumba at this stage. But I'm willing to try. No, actually, I had some ideas that I put out for... I noticed our websites are deficient of information about for parents with their local schools, except for Roosevelt School and the Bilingual Council, which is very, very active. One idea I had that I put on the list was each board member could attend and get to know family members, by the way, by doing that, at one PTO meeting a month and be assigned to that school for the whole year. That way, the board members can develop some understanding of issues more directly with the parents as they relate today. And that is a major suggestion that I have. Thank you.
As of 2011, Brunswick had the worst proficiency scores in New York City County. This includes fourth grade, eighth grade, and high school proficiency tests. What are you going to do to help our students improve their academic proficiency?
Sorry. One thing that we do do is we have after-school preparation. And I would encourage every child that needs to be in the after-school extra tutoring class, be there. If there's anything else that they need, I wish that the parent or if the principal could reach out to the families. And that would include the guidance counselors. Sorry, the parent liaisons. And we need to get everybody in the school involved. If it is lunch bunch, before-school tutoring, after-school tutoring, I think these are all necessary. And if we have to, maybe Saturday mornings, we can get the kids in for all the extra help that's possibly available.
In regards to the testing, I believe that we need to... Yes, the after-school programs will help, the Saturday programs. We also need to get, and this is something that we have right here, is the college students from Rutgers. Get them involved to help us, to help our kids to do better in the testing. I think that's a great resource that we don't use. And I know for a reason that we have after-school programs right now and have in Saturdays for the kids to take the test. So I know that we have it in place. Maybe we need to look into these programs and see if they're not working. What we need to do is maybe implement new programs.
Yes, so nine years that I've been on board with Initiative Blaze, the Plaid Smart Program, dealing with the kids. It predominantly started with the football team. But we branch out throughout the whole school. Any child that needs to be tutored can ask to be tutored and he will be taken care of. We also increased our professional development program with all our teachers. We initiated some new implementation and implemented some new processes to increase the knowledge and the ability for our teachers to teach our children effectively. You know, we have a multitude of programs with our bilingual program now. We sent out a team out to Tudor Vista, California. They studied a program over there, brought it back to the city of Brunswick, tweaked it up a little better. And now it's an outstanding program where our kids are exiting out for the ESL and moving on to the mainstream. So we're doing a lot to answer the questions of the testing.
Thank you. Like I said, as a student studying education and pursuing my teaching certificate, one of the critical things that we must acknowledge is motivation. Students must believe that they have a reason to want to perform well on these tests, want to perform well in school. So in order to do that, that's why I want to work tirelessly to make sure we expand the resources such as the Rutgers Feature Scholars Program or a program that Professor in Education, Dr. Lice, is working on, which they go into the middle school and they find a way to empower young women and young men to really understand that they do have a future outside of these walls, even though society may make them believe that that's not true. So one way that I would like to work on improving schools is making students want to perform well on these tests, want to perform well in school and want to learn. Thank you.
Yes, I believe we need more programs like Akar Kamakhan at Rutgers, the Odysseus Program, Office of Diversity for Academic Assess and the Sciences. Now, his program is very successful. There are Saturday tutoring. Students really have to sacrifice and be motivated. But the issue with him is he insists on parental buy-in. No students are accepted into his program unless the parents are totally involved and onboard. That helps with motivation. If the parents are there, the students know they have their back. So that's an issue that's very important. Without parental buy-in, it's hard to be... Some people are self-motivated. Don't get me wrong, there are those. But a lot of us are not.
To improve the proficiency in New Brunswick school students in terms of testing, I think that we need to focus on the core skills, you know, reading, writing, and math. I think that what happens far too often is what's up with social promotion. Kids who don't have all the skills that they really need are being pushed along through the system. And this goes double for ESL students. We need to make sure that before they leave ESL, they're fully ready to do the coursework in English. I think that extra help from Rutgers students is a great resource that the city has to offer. We need to expand that program. Stephanie is an example of someone who contributes in that way. And you know, every Rutgers student knows how to get into college. And that's something that they could be teaching to the students here.
Mr. Artis again, improving academic proficiency. This is a question specifically about the curriculum. How would you improve the current curriculum in our schools considering the high dropout rates? Specifically about the current curriculum.
About the curriculum. Okay, I think we need to take a look at the program and see where it's not working. I know the dropout rate keeps going up. And we need to find ways, whether it's the program that we need to change or bring a new program, whatever we need to do, we have to do it in order to keep the dropout rate lower. Being on the board has helped me figure out what is that we're not doing or where in order to achieve this.
Can you repeat the question, please?
The question is, how would you improve the current curriculum in our schools considering the high dropout rates?
This current board debate revises the curriculum every year. We look at all our... We take our information provided by the principals of all the schools. We look at where deficiencies are and then we revise. We have a current request, a revision plan for the next five years to improve various subjects in our school districts. So it's an ongoing process. It's not something that happens overnight. You have to see what failures are and then you go and increase and improve upon that. We attend conferences where we learn what other school districts are doing in the country. And we see many of those programs can work with our school. And we bring them back and we put it upon our mission to look into it and see if we can implement it in our school. So yes, it's a continual thing and we've continued been doing it for the last nine years.
Thank you. Curriculum?
I want to echo a lot of what Mr. Artis said. Revising a curriculum is very hard. And I definitely agree that attending these different conferences and understanding what's working in other districts is very critical and would be very helpful. One thing that I think that is missing in a lot of districts, I think would be very helpful, is addressing what the students have to say as well as what the teachers. And as a potential board member, I'd like to build those relationships and understand what is causing students not wanting to learn in class? Why are they not paying attention? Why are they dropping out of school? And once we know what's causing this, we are able to address this. And what I would like to do is find a way to implement this or I guess put this into the curriculum and make sure that students have a motivation to come to school. Thank you.
Yes, as Mr. Artis said, we revised the curriculum regularly for two reasons. One is, we're not happy with the way it's working. There are improvements needed. And the second reason is usually the more important one, because it's usually not that problem. The state has changed the curriculum requirements. The state requires us to cover certain topics certain ways. The books we're using now, oh, by the way, they don't do that. So we have to revise the curriculum in such a way. We have committees to adopt the textbooks. We then have upper-level administrators consulting, by the way, with the teachers. The teachers are involved in this, well, in producing the new curriculum. So that's the procedure which we do that. Now, second issue is implementation. Teacher buy-in, that is at the local level. That's at the school level. So we've got to make sure that the teachers are buying into the new curriculum and that it's being actually taught in the way that we intend it.
In terms of the curriculum, I think that it's vitally important that we focus on science and math. Technology is changing what's expected of American workers all the time. In the not-too-distant future, a lot of jobs that are working-class jobs will probably be done by computers and by machines. And it's important that we're preparing the students now to be ready for the jobs of the 21st century. So one thing I think is great is that there's a robotics club in the middle school. We need to expand on that kind of program. There's a lot of open-source technologies that are free. And there's online communities that are out there to help you learn how to use those technologies. I used these actually myself in my business. And as a potential board member, something I'd really be interested in doing is setting up the curriculum and after-school activities for the kids to learn these powerful new tools.
One thing that I've been thinking about is there are a lot of students that have to work, help watch their siblings. And sometimes they just can't devote enough time to school. They're in different directions. I've been thinking about Twilight Program, maybe an expansion of the Adult Learning Center in that area or up at the new high school and using the high school from say, maybe 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM. I have talked with some of my fellow board members about this. And this is something that we really need to look into. And I just want to say one thing. Our teachers are there. We have a great group of teachers. Sometimes they just need a little more assistance. And I would like to see an expansion of professional development and more use of the technology, the smart boards, iPads, iPods, potentially moving to more into a tablet-type of a direction. But the evening program is something I would really like to expand. Thank you.
We have a follow-up question on curriculum? Yes. Would you challenge increasing... Mr. Artis. Would you challenge the increasing emphasis on testing and the "teach to the test" curriculum? Can you repeat that, please? Would you challenge the increasing emphasis on testing and the quote, "teach to the test" curriculum?
Yeah, I would, you know, because, you know, it's not all about testing. Each community is unique, you know. And a lot of times what you read in the papers doesn't reflect the community you live in. And they just double up numbers from all these different schools. And they really don't tell the picture of your community. And I can tell you, in our community, we have a large mobility rate, okay? When a kid reaches the freshman year in school, he's assigned a number. That number follows him throughout his high school years. And when he moves and when the parents move and leave without notifying the school district, we get stuck with the number. It follows him during graduation. So when you look at graduate dropout rates, they're really bogus. When you look at graduation rates, they're really bogus because it don't take into account what the community, you know, is about. And so all I can tell you is, yes, I would challenge and yes, I would do that.
Could you just repeat the question one more time, please?
Would you challenge the increasing emphasis on testing and the quote, "teach to the test" curriculum?
I love this question. I'm absolutely against teaching to the test. As a future educator, I know this is not what I'm going to school for, to teach students how to fill in bubble sheets. And because this isn't... That's not like following graduation. You're not filling in bubble tests or repeating, I don't know, robo memorization. I just don't think that is correct. Forcing teachers to teach that way to students that this is all that education is worth? We need to take into consideration when you look at different cities such as Chicago or Philly or the walkouts across the country against these standardized tests, there's a reason why. Because this is how we learn through life. We don't take bubble tests all of our lives. And I think that really adds on to high dropout rates or low graduation rates because students aren't excited about school when it's all about testing. And that's something I would definitely challenge as a board member to really make a curriculum or a school environment that's something that students want to go to. Students that love to go to school and love to learn. And that is something I strongly will fight for. Thank you.
I agree. You need to make... You have to assess progress. And you have to assess progress in some way. There has to be some mechanism to do that, to know if a student is learning or not. But you don't need high-stakes testing. You don't need dramatic testing. In fact, the new standards, the new state standards that Sean referred to in Science Education, Math, is coming down the road. And part of their testing strategy, which by the way, will not just affect us in New Brunswick, it's all New Jersey and it's all 22 more states. Part of their program, instead of having everything be... They're going to use a different testing assessment procedure, not just high-stakes testing at the end. Instead of... They're going to use summative assessments that don't count, that give you feedback. That's what a student needs, feedback that motivates them. And this, I hope, will address some of the concerns with testing.
I would agree that some testing is necessary to assess how the students are doing. But it should never become the focus of what is taught in the classroom. And I think this is particularly important because increasingly jobs are requiring people to have strong problem-solving and critical thinking skills. I know in my work as a web developer, a key skill that I have is creativity, you know, and finding creative ways to solve problems. And also research. So having the core literacy in the subject matter is important. But from there, people need to be able to invent and to come up with new solutions to problems. And teaching the test doesn't do that. Albert Einstein paraphrased it famously, said, "He never bothered to learn something that was written down in the book." I think we have to learn, like I said, the core things for literacy, but you don't have to engage in a lot of robo memorization.
I've been against standardized testing forever. I think it labels a child at an early age and it labels them as a failure. Everybody learns differently. It takes other people a longer amount of time to grasp skills. And I just don't believe in it. I think the kids are there to learn. And if you make it exciting, they will learn. If you hold them to high expectations, they will learn. Standardized testing should be used only as a tool to improve. Improve the method of teaching, what we're teaching them. There's so much more we could be doing. And I just don't believe in standardized testing. I think that it labels you at an early age, but I just said. And I would encourage more reading, more poetry, more things that interest the children, maybe a good cooking class. They learn some more math skills in that.
Yes, I believe that testing is necessary. Maybe some testing is not needed. But we need to find out where our kids are and how the schools are doing in order to move on. So yes, we need some kind of testing.
What do you think is the single most critical factor to improve student graduation rate?
To improve student graduation rates?
The single most...
Single most important?
Critical factor.
Okay, it's improvement, okay. There's so many factors, so it's really hard to pick just one. But as all of you have seen me emphasize, it's really connecting the classroom to outside of the classroom and making sure that they see the connection of why they want, why they're learning what they're learning in their classrooms and how that will help them succeed or pursue the career of their choice or the future of their choice. So that's really important to me as well as motivation to get them to want to graduate. As I mentioned, through my mentoring experience, I do have children who, or students who tell me, "How do you expect me to care about graduation when I don't even know if I'm going to live to see the next day?" Because gamemakers is that crucial and vital in our New Brunswick community. And that has to be acknowledged. So really acknowledging all the factors that go into it is the way that we're going to address improving our graduation rates. Thank you.
You're exactly right. It's a social-economic issue that needs to be addressed. How you address that issue? If I knew the answer to that, I'd be a millionaire. But there are ways to try to tackle the problem. And you mentioned a number, and then we have to do it. We have to have programs. We have to bring in parents. How do we improve the social fabric of society, the neighborhoods, whatever? That's really on the ground level of everything that we do. The schools are a symptom of what we see in society, and that's the truth.
Mr. Martin? Most critical factor to improve student graduation rate?
I'd have to agree with the other respondents that it's hard to point to a single factor. But issues of public safety, I think, are extremely important. A lot of students are suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder. There's so much violence in this community. We also have to address the fundamentals, you know. Kids fall behind early on and then they never catch up. And then they have trouble in the later years of middle school and in high school, seeing how the course material is going to be relevant to their lives. So we need to engage them and make the learning relevant and show them that this stuff that they're learning is actually going to help them down the line and help them, you know, achieve what they want in life.
My idea is another idea that my fellow board members have heard me speak about a lot of times. I think the Abbott program is a nurturing program, small classes. You have a teacher who is like your guidance counselor. They have a guidance counselor attached to it that follows the student all through the day. She may not be their main teacher, but she follows them all through the day. It's a... Um, it's a small, individualized program. I think they get more individual attention. Uh, to me, that's the definition, definition of a small learning community. We have it in the high school. We have it down to the seventh grade. Um, part of it is the Cornell note-taking. And I think small nurturing areas within each school, each grade level, that would be what the kids need. They would be, um, taken care of, nurtured, and they know that they have people that they can turn to if they need a little help.
For me, it would be motivation. I believe that we need to find ways to motivate our, our students, our children, to stay in school, to do well, to, to show them that they can become successful in life and that they can have a future, a good future with a good career. So motivation, uh, we gotta find ways to make it motivate them to stay in school and do well.
Tough questions. I'll answer in six seconds. But I gotta, you know, my perspective, I gotta tell you, it's not one thing or, or, or an attitude that's gonna help increase graduation. It's a combination of things. Have to, has to start with the parent involvement in every aspect of the child. In school, from sports, to after-school activities, to his, even his friends, who he hangs out with. That's, that's paramount. It's the parent's involvement. Secondly, you have to have the programs available to, to make sure that it keeps their interest. And, you know, um, you have to have the faculty that can, uh, engage the children, make it rigorous enough for them to be interested in staying. When you combine, and you have to have a community, okay, that understands what, what evolves around that community. So you gotta work with the police department. You gotta work with the fire department. You gotta work with, it's, it's a whole village that has to work to increase, uh, graduation rate in the district.
Next question for Dr. Reynolds. Do you support charter schools and vouchers and vouchers?
Do I support charter schools?
And vouchers?
And vouchers. Uh, maybe, no.
School vouchers, I'm, I'm against, against them. Um, as far as charter schools, I have to look at a given, um, application and, and decide, uh, on its merits. One thing that's important to me is that the, uh, that the, the, the teachers have, um, have a union to, to represent them. So, generally, generally not.
No and no.
I believe in public schools, but I also believe in choices. I think that the public schools are not doing well. And right now, we have it in New Brunswick. Some of the parents don't send their kids to the public schools in New Brunswick. They have a choice. And I think if the public schools will be doing well, and our kids were running and being successful, we won't have a need for charter schools or any choice, any voucher. So that's my answer.
No and no.
Absolutely not. I know that, um, there are some charter schools that are doing some great things, but I believe quality education should be available to everyone. But quality education should not depend on luck, and that is why you do not support charter schools or vouchers. Thank you.
Mr. Monahan? Two related questions. What policies will you enact to cope with gang activity and violence? And how can you assure parents of their children's safety in schools?
So this is an issue that I think is really important. One of the things that I think, uh, we need to look at is, uh, that our social workers are getting enough support, and that the school has enough social workers. Um, with the rampant violence in our community, uh, it's, it's necessary that, um, that the social workers are, uh, serving as counselors for, um, for, 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 basically traumatized, traumatized youth in New Brunswick. Uh, one thing that I think would help is if, um, working with the police department, um, we could try to identify, uh, what students are involved in what, uh, in what gangs. And, um, and then we take, uh, take, that we, that we, that we really look at them. That we really look at where the gangs are, and, uh, and who's done what to whom. And, um, and then when something happens, uh, that, that we can intervene to, um, stop a spiral of violence.
I'm not really sure how you would solve the problem of the gangs. I think we have the policies in place. Um, when we can identify a gang member, uh, we try to get to them. Uh, we hope that there is no violence in school. Um, all schools have issues with violent acts. It's not just the ones in New Brunswick. Um, I'm not sure how to deal with gang members. Um, I know there's a lot of students, and they became disenchanted with everything, but they're gang. We have seen students in student hearings, and when you speak to the parent, they'll tell you, "No, my child's not in a gang." And I sometimes wonder, are the parents afraid of their own child? It's a shame. Um, I think we would have to work with all agencies, um, social agencies, to come up with the best method, and try and engage the student to be involved in student activities and not gang activities.
Can you repeat the question? Yeah, first, first part of the question is, how will you enact, what policies will you enact to cope with gang activity and violence? And how can you assure parents of their children's safety in school?
Uh, I believe that we need to come up with solutions, programs, activities out to school Saturday, uh, where kids, instead of being home alone, with nobody there, they can go to a place where they can have help with their homework, they can have mentors to look out to them. And then, maybe we can take all the kids out of gangs. Gangs have been here forever. But we can hopefully help feel them not to get into the gang violence and keep them out of the streets. But we need more programs, more recreational activities, uh, whether it's during the week or the weekends. So this is, I, I believe, will, will help resolve some of the issues that we have with gangs.
I would say that, uh, parents, parents, parents. They have to be involved in their kids' lives. They have to understand what their kids are doing out there. Uh, also, we need to increase our outreach sources, you know. We have the teen center. We need to increase activities at the teen center. We have to build our recreation environment to better our community so kids can get involved in sports more, you know, when these kids are, don't even wanna play sports. But we have a large Mexican community, and I see that, um, Saturdays and Sundays, they go and they play soccer. You know, we need to reach out to the people who are coordinating those games and perhaps talk to the kids. We are currently working with the police department in the city of New Brunswick. We need to increase that with more programs with the city of New Brunswick. We need to bring in, we, we, we're gonna revise our protocol for, um, phys ed and health to implement issues about violence, gang violence, teenage trafficking, and deal more with those situations.
Hey, I have two answers to this. Um, hitting back on the program that I'm involved in, Ruckus Future Sellers, we actually do have, we do have a couple of students who are involved in gangs, as well as students who were in gangs, but were able to get out. And this just shows the power of the mentorship kind of programs that I would like to expand if on the board. We have a mentor who used to be in a gang, and he was able to relate to the student who was in a gang and help him get out in a way. Um, as well as understanding why these students join gangs. When we, when we talk to students who have lost their friends to gangs, it's because they don't feel like they have a family. They don't feel like there's anywhere they can belong. And that's why I believe expanding these programs are critical to the New Brunswick community. And the second answer that I have to that is really providing ways for teachers to understand that gang violence exists. Um, I, I recently observed South Plainfield High School, and I learned that, um, professional development was a really powerful way to help teachers understand, um, understanding, uh, gang signs and how to address students that are in gangs. And that's something I would really like to bring to the New Brunswick community.
Dr. Reynolds, how to cope with gang activity and assure parents of their children's safety in school?
I, I think I would agree with everything that's said, and we gotta do it to the nth degree. Because gangs, uh, just what Stephanie said, it's a family breakdown. And there are alternative support structures that are pernicious. They're destructive. They ultimately are destructive. There has to be a connection, maybe to students, like Stephanie said, who can show them alternative pathways. But like Benny said, the parents, uh, we see this all the time. A student comes in who's gonna be disciplined. The student is obviously a gang member. We ask the parent, "Oh, my, my son, blah, 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 he's very good. He's not a member of any gang." They're completely blind. And maybe they are afraid, like Pat said. So we have a lot of problems. The teen center, by the way, is run through the recreation department of the city of New Brunswick. It's a program through the city that we participate in. And I think Benny's, uh, right, or whoever said it, we need to expand it and get more alternative activities for these students.
Thank you. Jason, one more question? Do you think board of education meetings should be televised?
Yes and no. I think maybe we could try a bit, see if there's an interest. Maybe because I have an aversion to getting my picture taken every 10 seconds. Um, I'm not really comfortable with it, but, you know, I might, I am willing to try it. We could look into it.
Yes, I think there should be televised. I think it will give an opportunity to people that are, or community people, or parents that can't go to the meeting, to at least get involved and see how it works and what goes on in the board of education meetings.
Absolutely not. I don't agree with having it televised. I think that, um, it allows for people to come in, even in new board members that come in, or, or even, uh, people from the community that come in, to grandstand and prolong and disrupt. So no, I think the process we have now works fine for our little community, and I think we should keep it that way.
Personally, for me, I believe that we should leave the question up for the community. If they want to see the board of education meetings televised, I think we should definitely provide that for them.
Yeah, I also have an aversion to being on television. However, there are two issues. One is televised and one being put on the web, like the Middlesex County does, where the meetings are, are taped and put up on, on the web to see later. They're not live, I think, right? They're taped and shown later. I think we should explore the issue, the, the problem. The parents do need to get more information. One problem I see, however, has to do with the bilingual nature of the parents who do come. They don't get translations immediately into the language that helps them understand what's going on. So one idea I had is when we go into closed session, if someone, not a board member, obviously, but someone has sort of a transcript of what is going on, what has happened, what votes were taken, what the issues were, and gives a brief summary in Spanish at that point. That would be very helpful.
I absolutely agree that we should, uh, we should televise the meetings and put them up on the web and provide Spanish translation. Um, I think that it would be a great, uh, step in, um, getting more, more of the community involved in, in the school system, um, and seeing, uh, what, what decisions the board, the board is making. I'm not that crazy about being on TV myself, but, uh, but, uh, as, as public officials, I think it's important that the board members, uh, are visible to the public and, uh, make, you know, make it, so that people can know what's going on. It does make sense.
So we're ready for our closing remarks. Each candidate takes two minutes, uh, to conclude, and start with Mr. Reynolds.
Well, I'm here as a team. With that, and Monahan, uh, we are here because we do care about the education of our children. Like I said, my kids being in school, and still got kids in the school. Uh, I want the best for my kids and the rest of the kids in the community. We have to make sure that the parents are part of our schools. We gotta make sure the staff, uh, we hear their concerns and their ideas and make them part so our kids can do better. We have to, uh, to find ways to bring parents in and make sure that our kids are doing better. Because the graduation rate right now is pretty low. And, and we, with the money that comes into the city for the, for the, uh, New Brunswick Board of Education, it doesn't reflect the education that, that, that they're getting. The graduation, yes, it's great to have new buildings and all that, but what goes inside the school is what matters. We gotta make sure our kids are learning and they can move on to the future, being successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz.
Again, only thank you, Unity Square, for having us here today. Uh, you know, I'm the incumbent here, uh, the one with Dr. Reynolds and Patricia Zdowski, you know. I, I can tell you that, um, our schools are fine. Our schools are functioning. We have the programs there. We have the staff there. We got the, the board. The staff is there. It works very well with the administration. We have a superintendent that's perhaps the best superintendent, St. New Jersey. We lucked out again, uh, Mr. Catherine, as a superintendent. And he has done tremendous work. Uh, our partnerships that we built with, uh, the wellness program, with the city, with, uh, Robert Wood Johnson, with Johnson &amp; Johnson, um, uh, you and, uh, New Jersey, uh, that's, no. You know who I'm talking about. I didn't remember the adjectives to that, but, uh, but we are doing well with the partnerships. And all, all that I'm asking is that you vote for me again. Vote for, uh, Dr. Reynolds. Vote for Kasegowski, so that we can continually improve the quality of education for our kids. All I ask them to do is go to the school. Everyone here tonight, it's Unity Square. Go to the school. Walk in, talk to the principal. See if there's education being done. You hear all the stories about, or people walking around saying, "Hey, kids are not gangish, hey, they're not doing this, they're not doing that," but, hey, go to the school. See for yourself what our kids are going through, the programs, the band, the music, the jazz band that's been, uh, recognized throughout the whole, the city for the outstanding work they've been doing. We've been engaging kids in different programs to keep them busy, trying our best to get them out of. You know, we had a kid who was into gangs, but when we started the band, he got out and he played music. So, yeah, you know, we are doing the things that need to be done in our community. And all I'm asking is for your support to continue to improve the quality education for the children of the city of New Brunswick.
Ms. Reynolds?
I would like to thank everyone again who came out to Unity Square. Thank you again, Unity Square, for having us here in this space. Um, I would like to respectfully disagree with Ms. Ortiz. When I see one of my students that I mentor at the school shaking her head, that's when you know that something definitely needs to be, something needs to be changed. Something, I, I believe that I can provide a very brave perspective to the board. As I'm studying education, I strongly question who else is more capable of providing something that's regarding education, other than a student who is in the school weekly or studying education and education policy. And I hope that you all consider that when you're at the voting booth on Tuesday. And again, I clearly stated my positions on very, um, controversial issues. And I hope if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out to me on our website. There is a contact information, as well as all of my other views and other perspectives are publicly online. And I'm always open for discussion, and I just hope that you make the right decision when you're at the booth on Tuesday. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Unity Square. Uh, I moved to Unity Square in 1980, before there was a Unity Square, as I understand. Uh, we needed a diverse board. We need a microcosm of the city. Right now, the board is exactly that. It's balanced. It has the right community relationships with everyone, from Rutgers to you name it, to Robert Wood Johnson, to all, all the, all the, I hate the word, my wife hates the word, stakeholders. Uh, we, we have developed programs for everybody. Look at, what's the name of the school? Lord Sterling School? No. Lord Sterling Community School. All our schools are community schools. They're available to public programs within the city of New Brunswick. Uh, so they are open, uh, evening programs for, for the whole city. And we do have partnerships with just about everyone. I, I have a list on my statement that I, that I placed, uh, on the questionnaire. My final comment is you don't need new board members to get new community academic programs. The current members are open and receptive. We're open to new ideas. And we have been, and we will continue to be. Uh, we have the experience that others who are trying to get on the board at the moment do not have. And believe it or not, uh, despite what is said about us, we are totally independent thinkers. We're open to anything. I thank you, Unity Square. This is very productive. And I was very happy to hear everyone's opinions tonight. to hear everyone's opinions tonight. Mr. Martin?
Thanks to everyone for coming out and to Unity Square for putting on this important forum. I hope that anyone running for office in New Brunswick will have to do the same thing in the future. So I hope that you'll consider this night a success and do it again next time. You know, I think that what we heard from everyone here was that there's a lot of problems and challenges that the schools face, and that the status quo is unacceptable. That's why I think that you should support myself and Martin DeRochel and Stephanie Rivera. New Brunswick's different communities have been divided for too long. And I think that our team can bring this all together and put the children first. We must all take responsibility for the education of our young people. It affects us all, even if you have kids or not. Because their future is going to affect our future. And as they're successful or not successful, that will affect our success or lack of success. So by working with everyone who makes the city great, I think that we can get New Brunswick children on the road to good jobs and a better future. So I hope you support me and the rest of our team on Tuesday. Thank you.
I also would like to thank Unity Square and everybody who came out tonight. I think the most important thing that everyone should do on Tuesday, April 16, is to vote. It's a privilege to vote, and we should all take advantage of that privilege. We have lots of positive things that go on in New Brunswick. And sometimes, we don't tune our own horn. Jazz Band, Avid, Play It Smart, Chorus, all the other little programs. We have successful students, and we will continue to have successful students. Are we perfect? No, but we're working on it. So everyone, please go out and vote. Vote what you feel and what you think. And I thank you for that, and I thank you for the opportunity to have been on the board, and I hope that I can continue for another three years. Thank you and have a good evening.
So to our audience, thanks for participation. Thanks for great questions. Remember to vote on Tuesday. That's this Tuesday coming up. Unity Square, Jason Caro, Anna Bonilla, Manny Malera, and Anthony Mendi. Thanks very much for doing this work together. And particularly to our candidates, thank you very much.